I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
Here.
Ms. Fabry?
Here.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
I'll wait. Present.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here. Thank you.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Present.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vinland Board of Education has called notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following announcing time, place, agenda, et cetera: The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Nuestra Comunidad, Vista Bueno, The Clerk for the City of Vinland, and the Administrative Office of Public Bulletin Board. I'd like to call up Johnstone Middle School students for the flag salute. Would everybody rise, please?
Pleasure, agents. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mustrelle, do we have executive session for this evening?
We do not.
Dr. Sneeden, do we have any special presentations tonight?
Yes, we do. Tonight, myself, Mr. Frye, and Mrs. Cottisbody will be honoring our teachers, governors, educators of the year, and the district governor, educator service professionals of the year. So... Good evening. It is a great honor to recognize our Governor's Educator of the Year and Support Staff Persons of the Year, beginning for 2022-2023, Mrs. Tabitha Haydock, 14-year English teacher from Vinland High School.
Congratulations.
And Mrs. Megan Bernhardt, 20-year Guidance Counselor from Vinland High School. Next, we have, from Johnstone Amsa, Mrs. Marie Donato, 34-year science teacher. And for Paraprofessional of the Year at Johnstone, 23 years as a nurse, Mrs. Sandra Arsenault.
Congratulations.
From Thomas Wallace Middle School, nine years serving as an eighth-grade math teacher, Mrs. Deborah O'Kane. And in her 19th year as a nurse, Mrs. Monica Thomas. From Veterans Memorial School, Miss Patricia Gibbs, 17 years as a seventh-grade English teacher. She wasn't able to be here, but we'll give her a round of applause. And having served three years as a paraprofessional educational interpreter, Mr. Matthew Giroux from Memorial School. From Sergeant Dominic Pilla Middle School, 16 years science teacher, Mrs. Estrella Rowan. And from Sergeant Dominic Pilla Middle School, 19 years as a school nurse, Mrs. Frances Mitch Ratcliffe. From Barcy School, six years as a K-5 art teacher, Miss Chelsea Marcachi. Also from Barcy, 32 years as a Guidance Counselor, Mrs. Jill Newcomb. From Petway School, 12 years in second grade, Mrs. Amanda Armstrong. Also from Petway Elementary School, 16 years as a paraprofessional classroom aide, Mrs. Peggy Wyberg. From Winslow School, 23 years, second-grade teacher, Mrs. Nicole Oaks. And from Winslow School, 19-year library media specialist, Miss Laura DeMatty.
Today, I learned your real name.
Yes, my real name.
I know. I never knew that was a real name.
From Duran School, six years as a third-grade special education basic skills teacher, Mrs. Catherine McManus. Also from Duran School, 22 years as a Guidance Counselor, Mrs. Kim Picari. Next, from DePolito School, 13 years serving as a K-4 elementary teacher, Miss Melissa Cilio. Also from DePolito, 18 years as a paraprofessional classroom aide, Mrs. Laurie Pelletier Gibner. From Many School, 10 years serving as a second-grade elementary school teacher, Mrs. Natalie Stangle. And from Many School, 24 years as a paraprofessional classroom aide, Miss Michelle McGill. From Gloria Sabatera School, 17 years as a fourth-grade elementary teacher, Mrs. Rebecca Toscano. And from Sabatera School, 35 years. Thirty-five years as a paraprofessional instructional aide, Mrs. Emily Chandler Hawkins.
That's the big one of the year, of the day. That's the longest amount of time. Congratulations.
From Rossi School, 24 years, second-grade teacher, Mrs. Teresa Jones. And from Rossi School, 10-year paraprofessional instructional aide, Mrs. Kristy Bertinazzi. From Delago, eight years as a preschool teacher, Miss Brandy Gauthier.
Congratulations.
And last but not least, from Delago, 16 years as a social worker, Miss Stephanie Stefiri.
I'm just getting away from the picture.
She wants to. Picture time.
Awesome. Maybe you're gonna make me get this one. Do they want to go upstairs? How many of us? How many do you need?
Our next special presentation, for our next special presentation, we'd like to call Mrs. Josephine DiMario, Nursing Supervisor for Vinland Public Schools, to the podium.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Sneeden, members of the board, our honorees, and the guests that are here to celebrate and support with them.
Get it that way. Can we just pause one second? Just wait one second, that way.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Sneeden, our honorees, and guests that are here to support them. This week was Teachers Week, next week is Nurses Week, National Nurses Week. And the theme of National Nurses Week is Nurses Make a Difference, Anytime, Anywhere, Always. And recognizing the importance of school nurses and what they do for our children each and every day, I'd like to recognize some of our outstanding nurses who got the Educational Support Award, as well as one who got another prestigious award. So again, I'd like to bring up, from Johnstone School, Nurse Sandy Arsenault. And from our middle school at Pilla, Nurse Frankie Mitch Ratcliffe. And from Wallace, unable to join us tonight, Miss Monica Thomas. And the outstanding award for Nursing Excellence at Rowan University, it's called the Medallion Award. This nurse, it's a very difficult award to achieve. You have to have not only a high GPA, but other qualities that stand out in a very competitive program. And it's our very own, from High School North, Miss Lauren Townsend. Thank you, nurses.
For our next special presentation, I'd like to invite Dr. Kristin Speekman, VASA President, to the podium. She will be recognized in the 2022-2023 VASA Administrators of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize one of our outstanding VASA administrators. And I'm going to be short and sweet and turn it right over to Dr. Negrin.
Okay. Good evening. We get the pleasure of being able to nominate our colleagues. And so this was my nomination for Ms. Alvarez. I believe that Jackie Roman Alvarez possesses all of the characteristics that we seek to recognize in our Administrator of the Year. Jackie is first and foremost, and always, a skilled educator. As her supervisor, when she taught at Vinland High School North, I can attest to the fact that she was always an innovator, who handled unpredictable situations with calm and ease. She continues to be an educator and innovator, who is always reading about new trends and helping teachers in her building to learn and apply methods that improve teaching and learning. She sees the larger picture, but then she's able to drill down to the details of how to make an abstract goal operational, in our context. Jackie is dedicated to learning and achievement for all teachers and students. I work closely with her on many occasions to deliver professional development to Vinland High School staff on issues related to English learners. Jackie always communicates to her staff the importance of teaching to all learners. And that enthusiasm always benefits me, as I engage with those staff members to help them develop more inclusive practices. Jackie maintains close relationships with students and families, and she encourages students to participate in clubs and activities and develop attachments to the school. This is of particular importance because many of the students that she works with have arrived to this country as adolescents. And forming a bond to the school is vital to their integration into the community, as well as to their academic success. She and I have also worked together on the development of a peer ambassador program, as well as the CIEE Global Navigator High School Grant, which provided Vinland High School students the opportunity to spend the summer studying abroad tuition-free. Currently, we are collaborating on a dual-credit bilingual teacher education program, which offers Rowan teacher education courses in Spanish to our recent arrivals, with the goal of growing our own supply of bilingual teachers. None of these initiatives would have been possible without Jackie's unwavering support. A former bilingual student herself, Jackie serves as a model to our students of what is possible, with ambition, hard work, and a desire to do better for yourself and others. The job of an assistant principal at Vinland High School can be all-consuming. Nevertheless, Jackie serves her community as a board member for Rowan College of South Jersey, and serves as a liaison so that Vinland students have an awareness of the programs that are... of the programs that are available to them close to home. Jackie is truly an asset to Vineland High School, to the Vineland Public Schools, and to the community of Vineland as a whole. Most certainly, she is an asset to me, as it would be infinitely harder for me to be effective in my role if I did not have her as a partner. Congratulations, Jackie.
Congratulations. Moving forward, do we have any questions or comments on the HIP report? Seeing none. Do we have any questions or comments on April 5, 2023 combined meeting, the April 5 executive session, or the April 24, 2023 public hearing? I see none. Do I have a motion?
No movement.
Second? Rule call.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes, except abstained from the April 24, 2023 meeting.
Mr. Fioki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any committee reports? Mr. Fioki?
Yes, good evening. Monday, May 1, at 8:00 a.m. via Google Meet, the Finance Committee met. In attendance was Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Silva, Mrs. Cottisbody, and myself. Following topics were discussed, vision plan options, PLTW grant, bids for Duran Winslow window replacement, mental health services, Systems 3000 contract, asset works, security vehicle repair versus replacement, bus replacement, NJ SIG safety grant, administrative salaries, saboteur annex release, SEDEXO contract, and 23, 24 budget questions. Thank you.
Any other reports, Mr. Holmes?
Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, April 25. Present were Mr. Mustarel, myself, Ms. Spinelli, Ms. Fabry, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Hall, Ms. Blakely, and Ms. Camer. Driver recap, 140 drivers have been budgeted, 136 route packages, that means the drivers needed, 135 field positions. We have 15 subs, seven drivers in training, and one waiting for their driver's test. Driver attendance, average absences in the morning was 16 from March. Averages in the afternoon was 19 from March. Student finder still underway, wayfinder still underway. Demography and transportation study has begun. Team concept continues to report on VHS dismissal and game night. Employee evaluations are in process. CDL Shared Service Agreement is in process of being used. The city plans to enroll two employees shortly, and replacement bus. Thank you.
On April 17, the Curriculum Instruction and Committee met. In attendance were Mr. Frye, Mr. Yano, myself, Mr. Silva, Ms. Spinelli. Discussed were a new course that will be offered at Vineland High School, the AT art SS. Also discussed was the Non-Tenured Teacher Academy. We discussed the E4 USA contract. We discussed the Stockton affiliation agreement. We also discussed the RCSJ requirements for dual credit. We discussed the PHET Interactive Simulations Grant. We also discussed the instructional coaches, as well as the Director of Curriculum closing date. Thank you.
Any further committee reports? Seeing none. Mr. DeSantis not here? Senators here for their report? Seeing none. Public comment on agenda items? We're going to limit each person to three minutes. Mr. Mustarel, do we have any yellow sheets?
We do. Wendy Osborne. Topic is class basic skills cuts.
Good evening. I'm here as a 33-year employee of Vineland. I'm here to discuss and beg you to do the right thing in terms of the proposed cuts at the elementary level, especially the cuts as they pertain to saboteur school. Historically, we know that small class size equals more time to work with diverse students and meet their needs. The goal for Vineland for many years was to have a 15-to-1 ratio in our classrooms. We have finally achieved that at some grade levels in certain schools. At this time, you're talking about cutting classes in order to make classrooms bigger. This would be detrimental to our students and the growth that we see in them. I shouldn't have to remind you that we are still trying to recover from COVID. We have students entering kindergarten, first, and second grade with no prior experience in school. Yes, I said second grade. With no prior school experience. In order to meet their needs and try to catch them up to some level, we need basic skills teachers working with them diligently every single day. These students are behind, and they need our assistance. It is also a fact that if students are not caught up at grade level by third grade, they will probably never get caught up. These students become our dropouts. Before you make your decisions, please also consider the population of schools, especially saboteur. Most of our children are in English-speaking classes, but they go home to no one who speaks English. Many of these students, what we give them during the school day is all that they're getting. If we don't give them what they deserve as educators, you are doing a disservice to our students and our community. If we have the money to create jobs like coaches and executive directors, then we have the money for classrooms and basic skills teachers. Thank you.
Regina Merkel. Topic is elementary cuts.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Regina Merkel. I am a fifth-grade teacher at Petway School. I am here as a very concerned teacher regarding the cuts to elementary schools across our district. As we all know, elementary is the foundation for a child's academic development. There are children along the way who need help academically. Sadly, we have students in our schools who make zero growth. Nothing's happening. And here, we have a service for them that they can get extra help with a basic skills teacher. And our district is now saying, no. We're taking one away, and you will only have one left if we get that one. And they are being replaced by coaches. Our peers will now be coaching us. We do not need coaches. As I said before, and I'll say it again, we're educated, we can read, we can help ourselves, we can learn, and we can teach each other as teachers. We do not need an instructional coach. We need what's best for the students of Vineland Public Schools. And by cutting from elementary, this is a huge mistake. You have not asked us, you don't come to our classrooms. You know, there's... Do you realize what it's like? I mean, we have, you know, I'm a fifth-grade special education teacher. My students get to me in fifth grade, and I'm thankful that they got the help they needed. But there's those other kids sitting in the classroom that didn't get that help. What's going to happen to them? We're going to fail them. And it's because you're going to allow it, and that's sad. We need to do what's best for our students. We need to put them first and not last.
Manya Fuller?
My name is Manya Fuller. I am a sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade social studies teacher at Pilla, Sergeant Dominic Pilla Middle School. So I didn't really write a lot down. I did look at the budget meeting last week, and I heard the idea of cutting elementary school teachers because their class sizes are too small, which is crazy to me, because what we want is small, right? Because we want that individual, a lot of group learning, which, you know, everybody wants to see, right? And then you want to move these teachers up to the middle school to help middle school teachers. I don't understand why it seemingly, respectfully, central administration is so out of touch with what goes on in the classrooms. But teachers are specialists in what it is that we teach. Just because we have a certification in it doesn't mean that we should be teaching it. So when you take an elementary school teacher that's not wanting to come to the middle school, that has never taught middle school, and plop them up there just because they can, you're going to not only be in a disservice to the elementary kids that they left behind, but you're doing a disservice to the middle school students that are in that building, because it's going to be a two-year learning curve for these teachers to be able to catch up and get on board to where we are, not to mention the fact, the shock of the system of coming to the middle school. I have one friend that says that middle school is a full-contact sport. You have to have thick skin. You can't just drop people off in the middle school and talk about, you're going to do X, Y, and Z because you can. And where are we putting these teachers? I can tell you that this year, as a 19-year teacher, was the first year I had no classroom. And not only did I have no classroom, but I was given, I think, one of the toughest schedules in the building, teaching eighth-grade first period, seventh-grade second period, then moving to another classroom on the other side of the building to teach sixth grade and seventh grade, then moving to another classroom to do study hall. Then I finally get a break to have lunch and to do my prep, and then I go back to another classroom to teach seventh. What are we doing? That wasn't beneficial to a single student, and it wasn't beneficial to me. And then I see that because of this schedule change, I'm actually getting dinged in my observation because I'm not getting to a class fast enough. This is what we're going to do. We're going to fill our buildings up with teachers that aren't prepared to be there and no place to put them. And the people who are suffering is the kids. I'm a hands-on teacher. I didn't do a single hands-on project because I moved around that building.
Your time is up. Could you go another 30 seconds? We only have three minutes.
I had seven, it was three minutes, right? So I had five seconds left. Yeah, I was watching it. So, I mean, I was stopped from what I was saying. I'm just asking that, like the person before said, if you want to know what we do, we need to come into the classrooms and actually sit in those classrooms, not do a pop-in to certain teachers. Pop in and stay, and see what we do and what we deal with before you make decisions like cutting and moving people around. Thank you.
And I want to apologize. I'm only getting hand signals as to the time left. I can't see this, so I apologize.
Lou Russo?
Good evening, everyone. Lou Russo, President of Vineland Education Association. I'm speaking for the delegation and in support of the budget. So I'm urging the board and the community, of course, to support our budget. And what is important is that it's a student-needs-focused budget. When I was here in March, the numbers and the plans that I saw, I was very happy with, and I think we're moving in the right direction. Since then, I haven't heard anything. The association, myself, we're not part of the dialogue. And I think that's a shame, because then what happens is that we hear lots of rumors and leaks and issues that we don't really know if they're real or imagined. But in no way, shape, or form should basic skills teachers be reduced in our elementary schools. Students need direct remedial care and assistance, and that cannot be done by instructional coaches. Coaching is something for athletics. We're professionals, we know how to do our job. The folks that are supposed to coach us are administrators, right? We already have those folks in our subject area supervisors. We don't need more coaches. In a teacher shortage that we're facing right now, to waste a certificated teacher in a coaching position, not directly serving students, is a waste of valuable personnel. So I urge you to go back, please, and relook at that, if that is, in fact, the plan that we're moving forward to. Coaches are in the middle. Their role is sometimes confused by both sides. And essentially, what it usually amounts to is they end up being assigned work by administrators to do, and they don't really impact children at all. So I would just urge you to go back, please, and relook at that. I trust that transfers are necessary to help us meet certificate requirements, class-size requirements. But we are concerned, if we're moving people out of elementary into middle, where middle is our biggest problem, that we don't create new problems in elementary. I trust that you folks will not do that. I heard that there's potentially a middle school block, a sixth block, which I think is encouraging to reduce class sizes in middle school. I was told about career and technical ed, but I think that's the wrong direction. It's too nebulous. I think we need to do what the curriculum requirements are. We need to focus on civics and financial literacy, because there are requirements at middle school. And I don't think confusing them, as we do, is effective at all. All right? Thank you. And once again, I urge everyone to support what I think is a step in the right direction. Let's just make sure we're on top of our class sizes and use our staff most efficiently. Thank you.
Chris Wilson? Topic is naming of 1112 gymnasium. Update on minority employment? That would be a topic for the end of the meeting. That's not an agenda item.
Good evening. I want to thank you guys for having this meeting today. We have some support in the audience today and seeing the actual proposal of the request of the adoption of the name of the gymnasium of 1112 building. Just speaking in fruition, we would like to have Edward Harvard as a possible name for that building. Mr. Harvard passed away in February, which was a major hit to our community. He was a pillar in our community, he was a mentor in our community, and an outstanding citizen to Vineland, and a wonderful educator in the Vineland Public School District. So he had over 38 years of teaching and also coached the men's basketball team at Violin High and had the winningest record in the state for Violin High and also took their teams to a state championship in New Jersey. He had two records of 21 and 3 with the highest winning percentage. And he also coached the girls' basketball team as well for three years. So we just want to say thank you to the board. We appreciate the acknowledgement of the possible request and the possible naming of the facility. And it is with our attention to present at the June meeting for Mr. Edward Harvard. Okay? Thank you.
Dana Quilas.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dana Quilas. I'm a Vineland resident and a Vineland Public Schools middle school math teacher for 24 years. I proudly work at the school named for Sergeant Dominic Pillar. Our school is full, beyond capacity. In September, we were told that Pillar had 702 students, well over 200 per grade level. Our accelerated classes are way beyond the 24 limit, upwards of 29 to 32. And many of our regular ed and block classes are also overloaded as well. Our halls are very crowded and congested. Students are forced to walk and touching each other is inevitable, which is leading to a lot of situations and problems. The hallways are difficult to navigate and the staff cannot reasonably walk in this traffic at all. This congestion also lends to students being late and the staff cannot verify their whereabouts. It becomes a safety concern because we are responsible for their location when they are assigned to be with us. They are late so frequently that we cannot stay on top of it. We have classrooms that are not staffed, have not been staffed all year with certificated special education teachers to service students with IEPs. We do not have available space to pull students out for small group testing or to read to them as IEPs require. And that lack of compliance is illegal. Unfortunately, we have teachers without classrooms, as you've heard, in a brand-new school. They are forced to drag their items around the building, period after period. We do not have enough classrooms for everyone to have reasonable space. Teachers have had to forego their projects and their ideas because they can't set up, clean up, and be out the door in time. It's not reasonable. And that doesn't hurt us. It hurts the learners. We house the most gorgeous state-of-the-art media center at Pillar and we struggle to use it as it is intended because six periods of the day, there's class going on in our media center. It's a classroom. It seldom gets to be used as a library. And sadly, our media specialist is one of the first people covered, pulled to cover classes as a substitute. While I have heard talk about elementary teachers coming to the middle school level to help alleviate the overcrowding, and I think, wow, that sounds amazing, great. Except where will they go? Where will they teach? We have no room. We do not need a peer coach or an instructional coach. We share quality ideas daily when we plan and we prep. We are capable and productive teachers with fabulous lessons and classroom climate. We have a credible math supervisor to consult with, and we are thrilled to have him back. He is a strong leader and an invaluable resource for the math department. And when we closed land the school, I don't know how we thought we could reasonably absorb all those kids seamlessly into the remaining schools. We are still feeling those effects. Middle school is difficult, and I've been here for the entire challenge of my career. Please consider the needs of the students and staff that want to provide quality education. And please listen to the valuable input of the trained, professional educators that you chose to employ, us.
Roxanne Durensis. Topic is budget.
Hi. I'm Roxanne Durensis. I teach fifth grade at DePaulito. I was here Monday, April 24th, to speak about my concerns regarding an enrollment-driven staff. I was informed by Mr. Yano and Mr. Mustarel that they ran the data and our incoming enrollment is decreasing. I need to see this data for myself. The teaching staff, the school administration, the parents, the general public. We need to see the data. Put it out there for us to see, transparency. I personally have collected the data the old-fashioned way, by calling every teacher in every building and asking how many students are in their classes. The data I collected does not indicate a decrease in enrollment, especially not one that would support the collapse of classrooms. What the data does indicate is every kindergarten class will be maxed out, 21 kiddos from day one of next year. So since we now are moving into an enrollment-driven staff, as soon as one of those classes has 22 students, we will be opening a collapsed classroom. Correct? Or is it, oops, we no longer are compliant, I'm sorry, and the student and the teacher will have to make do? And those numbers, 21, 23, 24, are not arbitrary numbers. We are a district in need. Our students need as much attention as possible. If those numbers were arbitrary, then why do we receive extra funding? We receive it because we're a district in need. Why is this even for a second, an option to fixing the horrific, out-of-compliance class sizes at the middle school? This district is overflowing with intelligent and well-informed teachers. We just filled the auditorium with them and honored them. Why don't we have a seat at the table in this decision? We're the people doing the teaching. Why is it that everyone knows better or more than we do? We need a seat at the table, and actually, we need several seats, and we need to be heard. You tell us that you're listening, but you don't. You say it's tough, we have to make cuts. But we are here begging for the students, not me. I'm begging for the kids. I close with this. Our students cannot afford larger class sizes. This is a massive, I mean, a massive mistake. And please, 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 show me the data.
I have no more yellow sheets for agenda items. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on an agenda item? Okay, thank you.
Moving on, discussion and approval regarding personnel items 1.1, retirements, resignations, terminations, leaves of absence, employment, transfers, student subs, extracurricular activities, and volunteers.
Questions or comments? Do I have Mr. Sabrana?
Madam President, for employees with more than a century of service to the district, that's going to be a huge loss. I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Provenzano for my entire career, and he'll be missed, as will the others. Thank you.
Any others? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
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 Roll call.
Ms. Acosta.
Yes.
Ms. Fabry.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody. Motion carries.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize and congratulate our new Sabater principal, Ms. Sofia Heredia Torres. If you'd like to come up and just welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I am extremely excited for this opportunity and grateful. I look forward to serving the Violin Public School system again, but this time as the principal at Sabater Elementary School. And it's great to be back at Violin, back at home. So thank you.
Again, congratulations.
Madam President, to the new principal at Sabater, I just want to say, Gloria Sabater was a classmate of mine at Violin High School. I'm sure you've heard a lot about her already. You will hear much more. She was a beautiful soul, and I hope that you will do her proud.
Discussion and approval regarding procedures and operations items 2.1 through 2.4. 2.1, approval of trips and district travel. 2.2, approval of the summer program, preschool through grade 12, as on the list provided on file with the board secretary. 2.4, approval of the first reading of the following bylaws as listed.
Point of order, it's 2.1 to 2.3. No problem.
Do we have questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Acosta.
Yes.
Ms. Fabry.
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana.
Yes.
Mr. Silva.
Yes.
Mrs. Cottisbody.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Discussion and approval regarding finance items 4.1 through 4.8. 4.1, approval of budgetary transfers for general and school-based budgets and grants for March of 2023. 4.2, approval that the board approved the board secretary's report. 4.3, the 2023-24 school district budget for submission to the State and New Jersey Department of Education. The general budget of $187,693,431. Special revenue, $32,587,279. Debt service, zero, for a total of $287.10, with a local tax levy of $29,849 and $146. Approval of maximum travel amount in accordance with NJASC, 2023 school district budget in the amount of $37,400. Travel amount spent to date in 2022-23 is $10,233.54. And 4.4, approval to submit the following grant applications, the 23-24 early childhood cap application in the amount of $4,771 and the 23-24 cap application for elementary teen and special needs for grades K to 6 for the amount of $14,733. Okay. 4.5, there's a 7 through 12 on the cap for 2023-24 in the amount of $6,358 and New Jersey Special Needs Child Assault Prevention Program for the fiscal year 2324, $4,851. 4.5, approval of the grant submission for New Jersey School Insurance Group, 2023 safety grant in the amount of $18,251 for continuous expansion and upgrades of school security cameras. 4.6, approval to apply for the PHET Interactive Simulations Grant in the amount of 99 cents per app at an approximate total of $9,500 based on the available enrollment data at this time. That total amount may change once all the enrollment numbers are completed. 4.7, approval of an agreement with engineering for us all for the 23-24 school year at no cost to the district. And 4.8, approval of the memorandum of understanding between the State of New Jersey, the New Jersey Office of Emergency Management, and the City of Violin Board of Ed for the update of public assistance designees effective May 4th, 2023, at no cost to the district.
Do I have any questions or comments on 4.1 through 4.8?
Madam President, I'd like to make a statement about the budget. I'm strongly opposed to approving the budget for two reasons. The first, some of the testimony we heard tonight. In particular, I have in the past opposed the expansion of administrative positions and the elimination of some basic skills. I happen to have a bias about that because my wife was a basic skills teacher for many years, and I've heard plenty of good data about why we need more, not less. The second is because of the economy. This country's on the heels of what was a devastating pandemic, and it dealt a crippling blow to the national economy. A lot of businesses were struggling and are struggling, and a lot of them are even closing. Job creation and retention have been at the lowest level since 2021. We all know about inflation. It's rampant. And recent interest hikes by the Fed, the 10th one today, actually, in the last 14 months, they're not helping very much. The cost of groceries is up 8.4% over a year ago. Overall, the typical family's spending $313 per month just to keep their heads above the water. Of course, that includes a lot of families in Violin. They're scrambling to make ends meet, especially in our community. This is in a wealthy community. This is in Princeton, Cherry Hill, Marlton, or anything. So if they had a vote on this budget and not the nine of us, I have a feeling that they wouldn't be voting yes to increase taxes by 6%. You know, and for a while, the taxpayers did have a vote. And then that went away some years ago. So that does put the burden and the responsibility on us to do what's right for the kids, balancing the interest of the people that have to pay the bills. So this is no reflection on the hard work of Mr. Mustarel or his team. But I'm confident that they can find a way for us to meet our most pressing needs, resolve some of the issues we heard tonight, and have a tax increase that's more in line with what people can afford to pay. To be honest with you, it was zero for a lot of years. It's a long story. We had budget money infusion from the Abbott decision. And then people didn't want to raise taxes if they didn't have to. So it was zero for a long time. And I remember the first tax increase of 2% was a big deal. We're up to four. I believe that there's a possibility we can get what we need and what we have to have for 4%, not 6. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment also, probably beating a dead horse. I spoke at the reorganization meeting. I spoke at the tax levy. Everybody knows I voted no. I thank everybody who has come out to speak at all of those meetings. Sometimes we don't get what you guys are telling us. So I appreciate everything that you've said. With the 6% tax levy budget, I can't in all good conscience support that because it doesn't support what we want. We're having cuts. We're gaining administrative positions at Central, and we're losing basic skills teachers. If we were getting other things, I'd say have at it, go for it. I'd be so supportive. But I can't in all good conscience support something that we're not getting anything for. Our students are not getting anything for this. You guys are not getting anything for this. So when I vote, I take into consideration everybody. We represent the school district. We represent the students, but we also represent the people here in Vineland. You voted for us, and I'm trying to do my best to support everybody. And as Mr. Sabrana said, times are tough right now. But if we were getting something for this 6%, I would feel a whole lot better about voting yes. But since I voted no for other things, I can't, I would be hypocritical to vote yes. Any more comments?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question or I'd like some more information on exactly, from what I understood, we are voting on a total budget amount, not specific job transfers and cuts. Am I misinterpreting that?
That's correct. You'll be voting on the tax levy of $29,849,146, as well as the... as well as the total budget for general fund and special revenue of $220,280,170. That's what you're voting on.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Acosta?
My, my vote is yes. While I know that 6% is a high number, I believe that it worked to meet the educational needs of this district. Parents, I know myself included, are more than willing to bear the extra costs associated with educating our kids. It's my understanding that the vote tonight is a vote specifically on the actual budgetary funds that we will be using for next year. Not, we're not voting on the specifics of any cuts or transfers or anything like that. So this is just merely for, for purposes of the budget and the numbers that Mr. Mustarel gave us. I vote yes.
Thank you. Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
No.
I'm sorry, you're voting no for everything? 4.1 through 4.8?
Yes on everything except...
4.3?
4.3.
4.3, A, B, and C, you're voting no for?
Correct.
Budget is A and B.
He's voting for 4. A, B, and C. Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes to all, no to 4.3, A and B. And I just want to say, we are voting for a number, but that number includes everything that we all talked about.
Madam President, apologies.
Motion carries. That's okay.
4, I'm voting yes on C.
Okay. I made the change. Thank you. Motion carries.
Discussion and approval regarding finance items 4.9 through 4.16. 4.9, approval of a shared service agreement between the City of Vineland Board of Education and the City of Vineland for the use of the city's vehicle fuel island facility for the district's sole purpose of refueling its bus fleet and other vehicles owned or leased by the district with gas and diesel fuel for the time period beginning July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025, for the cost of fuel plus an annual 2% administrative fee. 4.10, approval of the lease extension agreement between the Vineland Community Health and Education Center and the City of Vineland Board of Ed for a five-year term from June 15, 2023 through June 14, 2028. 4.11, approval of a professional services contract between the Vineland Board of Education and Healthcare Consultants, Inc., a New Jersey corporation, doing business as newborn nurses for one-to-one school nursing services at a rate of $65 an hour for an LPN 75 for an RN and for substitute school nursing services at a rate of 75 an hour for LPN 85 for RN in a form acceptable by the board solicitor and superintendent for July 1, 23 through June 30, 24. 4.12, approval of a professional services agreement between Preferred Home Healthcare and Nursing Services and the City of Vineland Board of Ed to provide nursing services for special education students in the amount of $57 an hour for an LPN, $62 an hour for an RN, as listed in Attachment A from July 1, 23 through June 30, 24, in a form acceptable by the board solicitor and superintendent. 4.13, approval of the 23-24 itinerant shared services agreement between Salem County Special Services School District and Vineland Public School District for July 1, 23 through June 30, 24, in a form acceptable to the board solicitor and superintendent. 4.14, approval of the five-year contract renewal for Food Service Management Company for the term July 1, 23 to June 30, 24, with Sodexo, including a .1619 cents per meal entry with the guaranteed amount of $150,000. 4.15, approval pursuant to NJSA 18A-22A and B, the City of Vineland Board of Ed is rejecting all proposals received for PW05-23/24 Duran and Winslow window replacement. And 4.16, approval of a one-year agreement with an optional one-year renewal with AssetWorks Risk Management for the annual inventory appraisal services for the City of Vineland Board of Ed for a cost of $27,000 for '23 and $27,000 for '24, in a form acceptable to the board solicitor and superintendent.
Question and comments on 4.9 through 4.16? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty? Motion carries.
I don't see anything on our agenda, regular agenda items. 12 proposed items for review for discussion or adoption by board members. A board member requests for the naming of Vineland High School South Gymnasium pursuant to Board Policy 7250, school and facility names. I'm going to defer to our solicitor to explain that.
Thank you, Mrs. Cottis Potty. Policy 7250 sets forth the process that the board is to follow when considering naming a facility or a school after an individual. The process involves a request by a board member or a member of the public. And in this particular case, Mr. Holmes has requested the board to consider naming the Vineland High School South Gymnasium after an individual that meets the qualifications and criteria of that policy. You're not being asked tonight to name the gymnasium after any specific individual. The policy requires that you make the request, the policy's invoked, and nominations are taken from the public. And at a later time, after the nominations are in, board members may decide whether to name the, the name of the individual to be selected. I caution board members not to endorse a particular individual at this time. You're going to be asked to consider one or more individuals later. So as you don't conflict yourself, this is just approving the process. So I suggest, Mrs. Cottis Potty, that you entertain a motion to implement the process under Policy 7250 to name the Vineland High School South Gymnasium in honor of an individual meeting the qualifications and criteria under Policy 7250. That would be the motion that you would entertain. I just named it. You don't have to repeat it.
Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so at this point, the board secretary then will continue to follow the policy and the program.
Do I have any questions or comments on the bills for March 2023? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fiocchi, did you?
I moved it, yeah.
Moved it. Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Fabry?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Potty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I see we have no emergent items. We have an opportunity for the public to address the board on items that are not on the agenda. Please limit yourself to three minutes.
Suheili Miranda?
Good evening. My name is Suheili Miranda, and I'm here to advocate for my daughter, Eliani Miranda. She is eight years old and is supported by an IP at Winslow Elementary School. I have tried to work with the district in providing a free and an appropriate education for my daughter for years. I've had multiple IP meetings, mediations with no success. The IP is not being followed. My daughter's day consists of being in an overcrowded, self-contained, autistic classroom. She requires intensive instruction to maintain her focus. She is easily distracted by other students' behavior. She does not receive one-on-one support in classroom and has been unsuccessful in all aspects. I have seen skills emerging from her at home ABA care, and I am asking for the same consideration for her at school. She requires constant and frequent redirection, refocus, and reinforcement to learn. That should not be the responsibility of the special ed education. I am aware that the district does provide one-on-one support and out-of-district placement to assist children in assessing appropriate education, and that is what I'm asking for. Due to COVID and virtual learning and no help, she has missed out on critical years for her development. I am here to ask you to take a stand and help me support my daughter. I'm begging for the future of my daughter's education and for consideration in placing her at a school that can meet her basic right to an education. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Tabitha Hadak? Topic is VHS.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who may not know me, I am Tabitha Hadak. I'm the 23 Teacher of the Year at Vineland High School, and as of this board meeting, I've officially resigned. There are many reasons for me choosing to leave the field of education. Why I'm starting to cry right now, I have no idea because I never expected that. And unfortunately, this school year has solidified my choice. I do hope that everyone who is listening is able to not take offense to anything as everything I'm going to say is from myself and some coworkers who were afraid to speak up. But serious change is needed. There is a lack of discipline and a lack of continuity with following through with the board-approved discipline. Student infractions usually range from conference with student to reported in error to warnings, where the referral is deleted completely from the Genesis gradebook. Too many students disrespect the staff, knowing that they will not receive any consequence. Any sort of discipline, along with zero tolerance, has been relaxed to the point that students are running the school. Literally, they are running around the school and cannot be stopped. Hundreds of students are traveling between VHS North and South between each class period, yet none of the students traveling between the two buildings passes through the metal detectors upon entering either building, which creates a serious security breach. Anyone can smuggle in a weapon or drugs between class periods or just walk in. The student fighting is practically every day. Students know that zero tolerance equals four days out of school, as opposed to the past practice of 10 days. Teachers and other staff members are breaking up fights regularly because there is no one else to do so. They are being injured mentally and physically. Students are wandering and roaming the halls regularly. They come late, traveling to and from the buildings, or they are looking for an unlocked bathroom. There is no urgency to get to class on time. When they do not have to work for a grade, like getting a 50 for a zero, they see no purpose in remaining in the classroom to learn. They would rather use their cell phones to view the latest fight, plan their next drug deal, or read drama that is posted on social media. The drugs are a major issue since students are not being searched properly. The students are using our buildings to conduct drug deals. They are using their phones to plan to meet up and sell drugs or to go to the bathroom and get high. Please, I beg for all of you to step in and do something. We need change. We need help. We need safe buildings where education is possible. My suggestion is that if any of the board members would like to gain a firsthand experience of these issues, please come and spend a week at the North and South Buildings from 7:00 AM until after dismissal to see what actually is going on there. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Eugene Madiel. I'd like to thank the board for considering naming the Vineland High School 1112 Gymnasium. There will be at least one person I know whose name will be brought up who is more than deserving. And if there are any problems with policy conflicts, give me a call, and I can help you out on how to take care of that. I've done it before. And one other thing, I wasn't going to talk about any of this other stuff, but I just have to. George Santayana said, "Those who do not learn from the mistakes of the past will repeat them." And I'm telling all of you right now, if you hire any coaches, that's the biggest mistake you can make that I heard tonight, for you to take people out of a classroom and have them walk around and talk to their fellow stu-, uh, teachers who don't want to listen to them. I've been hearing that for I don't know how many years. They are not their superiors, and they do not believe that they accomplish anything. And I tell you right now, you have no data whatsoever from all your past coaching positions to justify doing that. Everybody knows you have a teacher shortage. Every teacher you have should be put in the classroom. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, again, Vineland Education Association. I just want to thank the board for adopting the budget. As I said, it's a movement in the right direction. It's sincerely appreciated, not only by the association, our members. It'll be appreciated by the students, the parents, and the entire community. Also, I'm glad, and I thank you for voting to approve a process for the gym. Working with Mr. Harvard at Vineland High School, although I know there could be other nominees, I just know that that man made an impression on everyone that he touched. He made an impression on Vineland High School. He made an impression on me. Going to his funeral was very painful because that man was a ray of light, and we need more rays of light, especially in the gym.
Evening. Tara Meyerson. I'm a Vineland resident as well as a teacher. After speaking, after hearing Tabitha speak, that hurt because what she said is so true, and we are losing great teachers like her. And why are we losing great teachers like her? Because of the decisions that are being made from administration. And I just hope that after approving this budgetary number, which does good in the sense that it's raising revenue, which is so long overdue and so needed, I have to say that we need, you need to do your homework. So during this time, since, you know, line items are not approved and, and just the numbers approved, I am going to request that each one of you come into our buildings, spend a week, walk around, get a feel, and also look at data because we have numbers of reading levels and performance that are not showing growth of our students, and that's because we're ripping intervention from them. We are choosing a new math program, from what I hear, that we've had for the past nine years, which our math scores dramatically dropped. So why are we approving, or are we going to approve, a new math program where there has been no success? So that's another thing, you know, on your homework to do. So that's another thing, you know, on your homework to do list if you can that I'd like you to consider, as well as really looking at and talking to the teachers of your district. We know what's going on. We have the insight. We need, we need people to address the needs of our students. We don't need coaches to address the teachers to address the students. We need to cut that out, that thought that it's not going to work, no matter how lovely it sounds coming from our superintendent, no matter what the data may say, it's not going to work, I can tell you. And I hope that now you can really take a deep dive and look at, you know, what we really need. Come have conversations with us, please, board members. Now you have the time to do it now that our numbers are approved. And I really, you know, knowing Tabitha for a long time, you are losing an excellent, fine educator. And I hate to say it, but a lot of what's been going on is to blame. And you really need to take a hard look at the reality of our school district and, you know, make some good decisions where, you know, for the tax levy increase, where it really matters. Okay, because you are increasing, so let's make that increase worthwhile. Thank you.
Hello, my name is April Stevenson Kender and I'm at VHS Tanner Building. Most people call it the North Building, but we all know Dennis Tanner and his extreme dedication to our students. So I say it loud and I say it proud, Tanner Building. What I would like to speak about, there are a couple of things. I first want to say thank you so much for giving us this time to speak. I know that you lead busy lives and I have to say there are many things that are going really well with our schools. However, there are some things that we can truly use your help with. Some of them is being a board member means we need to see you. I would love to see your faces, especially at a time like these. Another thing, of course, is that we need to start thinking about our grading policy, maybe a little bit more. My kids are very intelligent. They have figured out that they need a minimum of 240 points by the end of the year, and many of them know the first 200 are free because they get 50s no matter what they really make. Now, I'm sure you're saying 40 more points, that's not too much. Maybe they have to actually pass a final. Yes, they do, but if only if they get less than a 90, do they have to do the final. So I have kids who are in my class who have figured out that they have to do work for two marking periods and the rest of the year, they can pretty much skate by and hopefully pass that final. Now, I know this is not something that you're thinking to yourself. That doesn't sound too bad. However, for those two marking periods, I have kids who do not want to listen, who do not have any problems telling me where to go, how to do it, and of course, saying this in very colorful language. So I would like you to think about that when you're talking about the 50 policy. Does it really help the students? I don't know, but I know that every day when I go in, I want my kids to learn, not just to take a test, but to learn because they really value the information that they're receiving. Now, of course, there is the idea of safety. Yes, I'm at the Tanner Building and yes, I do have students who are going back and forth between the Tanner and the South Building without having to go through the metal detectors. What would stop them from stopping off at someone else's car, picking up a nice little rifle, maybe an AR, and coming into the building and shooting me or my other colleagues? Now, I'm sure that's not going to happen because, you know, I pray every day that it won't, but just for the off chance, is there anything we can do to stop maybe some of that back and forth? And maybe having enough people who are considered security specialists, not just people inside of a blue shirt, but real security specialists who can stop that from happening? So I'm going to say thank you so much for your time and your consideration. And please, at any time, if you want to come to Vineland High School Tanner Building, please come see us.
Real quick, I don't want to hold you guys too much longer. I know we have a lot of commitments, I'm late to a meeting as well. But I just want to give an update on, we brought to the attention of this board last October, the percentages of minority employment, specifically African-American, that are currently in the Vineland Public School system. We understand that 96% are Caucasian teachers that are currently holding these jobs. I would like to congratulate Dr. Rossi, Dr. Sneeden, Dr. Frye, and the superintendent on the hiring of Sophia for the Sabatier School. Congratulations, something that we've been pulling for. But we want to keep our mind and focus on changing this percentage. We've been having very, very productive conversations since last October, meeting with those three, and very goal-focused, very goal-focused responses and solutions. And now we just want to make sure that we get down to having some results. I'm hearing some of these teachers speak, and I will say this, and I appreciate Mr. Russo and Mr. Medio bringing up Mr. Harvard's name. So I'll say something that I wasn't going to say. When I was in Vineland High, Chalky Ottinger was a very good friend of mine. Treated me phenomenally, sat me down when I needed, and conveyed and was a mentor to me. But it was something different about when I saw Mr. Harvard in the hall. One, because he knew my mother and my father. Two, because he had the direct phone number, but I would tighten up a little quicker when I saw him. So we need educators that are mentors, that can relate, relate to the diversity of our population in this city. We're over 50% minorities in students in these schools, but yet the faculty doesn't reflect that. So what I'm saying is this, not to knock the faculty that we have, but when you see somebody that looks like you, that speaks like you, know how you came up, know the trials and tribulations you may have faced, you act a little different. Not saying that all the problems will be fixed, that this young lady that is disheartening to hear that is retiring, but you might reduce it a little bit. So again, I commend Dr. Rossi, Dr. Sneeden, the superintendent for being proactive in our approach and how we're going about changing the climate of the lack of diversity in our faculty and moving forward to make it more inclusive. So thank you and have a good evening.
Hello, Dana Keles again. I just, in talks about the grading policy and such that April mentioned, it compelled me to just bring a conversation I had with my students today who took their NJSLA math portion of state testing today. And after I cleaned up all the materials and everything was gone and all the secure stuff was secure, I said to the students, "How was the math today?" as their math teacher. And they said, "We didn't have enough time." And I'm like, "Oh, you felt like you didn't have enough time?" And they're like, "No." And I said, "Oh, well, I think I understand why because you get endless time all school year long to do your assignments." We take everything late. We give 50 points for zero work and we enable all these ideas throughout the year. And then we have to give our children a timed test that they've never really taken timed tests because all year, "Oh, can I finish tomorrow?" "Oh, can I do this?" "Oh, can I have more time?" And we're told to, yes, yes, yes them. And then today, it was just disheartening. It was sad and I thought to myself, "Yeah, I bet you didn't have good time management. I bet it was difficult for you to manage your time for a 60-minute section" because we don't, we don't practice that. We don't require that. So this is the time where that comes to light and it made me think, that's really a shame because in the world, they're going to take SATs and they're going to take college exams and they don't get those do-overs. And we're not preparing them for what's happening because of this willy-nilly grading that we're doing. So it just, I don't know, jumped out at me today. It made me upset and I thought, "Yeah, you guys are right. I know why." It made a lot of sense. So when the kids speak, a lot of times what they say is spot-on. And today, it really came to light. Thanks.
Do we have any old business? Seeing none, new business. Board member comments, I'm going to start with Mr. Feo.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Holmes?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Costa?
Well, first, I want to congratulate all of the teachers that were recognized here today as recipients of the Governor's Educator of the Year Award. Congratulations to the dedication and hard work of each of them, as well as the paraprofessionals and also our nurses that do so much for our students. But I'd also like to take the opportunity just to say congratulations to all teachers who put in the time and effort and dedicate their livelihood to mentoring and teaching and being there for our students day in and day out. I know it's not an easy job, but I know I appreciate it. And I can speak for most parents. They're extremely grateful for all you do for the kids. And with respect to our new principal, I'd like to congratulate her. I'm sure that Mrs. Hradia will do a great job and I look forward to seeing all the good things coming to Sabatier. With respect to the individuals that are retiring, it's always kind of bittersweet because we lose people with tremendous experience and dedication to their jobs. But I wish you much luck and success in all future endeavors. And with respect to all of the members of the public that came to speak, thank you. Thank you very much for coming and expressing your views today. We need to hear from not only members of our community, but also our faculty, staff, basically those people that are in the trenches to help us make informed decisions. So thank you very much.
Ms. Fabry? Nothing at this time. Mr. Rivera?
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the Johnstone students for leading us in the flag salute. This year marks 25 years since I graduated high school. And since this week, we celebrated Principal Appreciation Day and Teacher Appreciation Day. It led me to think back of all the teachers and principals that have impacted, that did impact my life as I went through the Vineland Public Schools. Teachers like Mrs. Byers and Mrs. DiBiase, Mr. Nichols, Mrs. Sui, teachers like Mrs. Kasabun who failed me in ninth grade algebra, and was the best teacher I've ever had. And I think of all the teachers that are probably now retired, that are no longer in the school district, but impacted so many students' lives. And now, you know, I sit in this position, privileged position, and I'm able to do what I do because of those teachers. Every single teacher in this school district, we, I know that you guys are dedicated. I know that you guys are, you wake up every morning and you have these, our children in mind. You have our, their best interests in mind. And, you know, we can't thank you enough. To hear what's going on in the high school is not, is not, is not something new. We've heard it before and it's unfortunate. As many of you know, I've expressed my disagreement, let's say, with our discipline policy many times. I won't get myself in trouble, Mr., but I'm not a, I'm not a fan. And we need to revisit that policy. We also need to revisit how we challenge our students in the classroom. I'm invested in this school district because I have children in this school district. And I want my children challenged. I don't want my children to be pushed through and just given the bare minimum so they can just get through the next grade. No, I want my children challenged. Because our children need to be challenged because in other places in this world, their children are being challenged. And if our children do not meet those standards, they're going to be left behind in the world that we live in today. So I'd like to say again, thank you. Thank you for what you do and thank you for the effort. Continue doing what you're doing. On the 25th of April, I had the opportunity to speak to a group of students that came to Rome University from our school district that came with Dr. Nagrin, the Educaores del Futuro. These are bilingual students that are seeking a career in education. And I was very much encouraged by these students. I had the opportunity to speak to them and I had the opportunity to kind of give them a little bit of advice and insight. And I'm thankful that I had that opportunity because to meet the needs as the gentleman that spoke regarding hiring individuals that look like our population in our schools, that's a step in the right direction. I can't, I can't express the need. It's a need that we need because it's something to be taught by someone that's a great teacher and there's nothing taken away from any other great teachers. But when you can identify with someone that comes from the same place as you, it's impactful to those students. And to see that they can succeed, it's even, an even greater impact. The budget was not, is always not an easy decision, whether one way or another. As I mentioned, as a parent of students in this school district, I saw it as an investment in our kids. We need to invest in our kids and I'm willing to sacrifice to do that. And we need to, we need to provide them with the best opportunity to succeed and put them in positions to succeed. And that is all for tonight. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sperano?
Congratulations to our flag saluters, all the teachers that were honored tonight. You want to play that game, huh, Dennis? So you said 25 years? Mine's 55 this year. I'm glad to be sitting here to talk here about it. But there are, I can think of a dozen teachers who had a great influence on me and my career, especially Bruce Retman, who is fortunately still alive and he's coming to our reunion. He was my high school journalism teacher and he inspired me to go on to not only higher education, but a career that lasted 45 years in newspapers, radio, and television. Great guy. And there are many, many others along the way, especially one who taught in this building, Bertha Birch, who was my eighth-grade language arts teacher and later became a colleague. And that was a huge thrill, somebody that I admired so much, to be working side by side with her. In fact, I was at the first class when this became Landis Junior High School after the new high school on Cheston Avenue opened pre-VHS North. And it was probably the largest classroom I'd ever been in and I sat here and looked around. I think about that every time I walk in here. But anyway, I just hope it gets warm soon because I'm tired of being cold all the time. Thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Nothing at this time.
Dr. Sneeden?
Thank you, Ms. Cottisbody. April was a very short month, but it was full of activities. We celebrated Bubble Day district-wide on April 21st with many schools participating in our annual Blow Bubbles for Autism Awareness at 1:15. Wallace Middle School held its second annual Role Model Dinner, which was another huge success. And students from all grade levels were asked to nominate someone who's had a positive impact on their lives and who they viewed as a role model and they were able to honor them that evening. Vineland High School held its annual Career Fair last week and packed the gymnasium with local businesses, colleges, military branches. And the VHS students were very interested in learning more about everything on display. On Thursday, we hosted the first middle school art show here at Landis and it was a great opportunity for our middle schools to show off their talents to their proud family members. opportunity for our middle schools to show off their talents to their proud family members. We have many great upcoming events that are open to the public, this Friday being one of them, at 5:00 PM at Johnstone School, the Vineland Preschool Program. We'll be hosting the annual Little Folks Festival. All families with young children are invited to come out and enjoy the evening, and learn more about our amazing preschool programs. Our Vineland High School Dance Recital will be held on May 11th at 6 o'clock at Vineland High. The dance program students have been hard at work all year, and can't wait to put on another great show. The All District Strings Concert is going to be held on May 22nd at 7:00 PM at Vineland High School. Students of all age levels will wow you with their musical talents on the strings. There are many, many more events, you can check out our website and your school-based calendars for the dates and the times, and we do encourage you to come out and support our students however you can, and I want to wish Mr. Yano a get well soon. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the Johnstone students who came out to the flag salute, congratulations to all of our District Governor's Education Educational Service Professional Award winners, our nursing winners, Mrs. Alvarez, who was named VASSA Administrator of the Year, congratulations to Ms. Heredia, speedy recovery to Mr. Yano. Happy Principal, Nurses, Teachers Appreciation Day, Week, I know they're all around here sometime, this week, next week. We do really appreciate you, sometimes you might think we don't, but we really, really do. Preschool, I know they're still enrolling, so please get out, go to the festival if you have a child or know someone that's preschool age, it's a wonderful event. Ms. Osborne, Ms. Merkel, Ms. Fuller, Mr. Russo, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Quiles, Ms. Durensis, Ms. Kender, Ms. Miranda, Ms. Haydock, Mr. Medio, Ms. Meyerson. I heard everything that you said, I see many of you at the meetings, and I appreciate everything that you tell us. Ms. Haydock's a little more personal, she's a good friend of my daughter's, so it breaks my heart to see this happen. Ms. Meyerson and Ms. Kender, I do try to get into the schools as much as possible, unfortunately, I do have a full-time job, and I cannot be there a week at a time, but I will promise you that I will get to the schools again. But if you know me, you know that I am in the schools. I did vote no to the budget, it wasn't personal to anybody, I really appreciate all the hard work that Mr. Mustarel and his team did, it was just something personal for me that I voted no for. It doesn't mean that I'm not invested in our students, because I think anyone that knows me knows that I'm invested in this district and in the students. Again, I hope everyone has a good night, thank you all for coming out, it's nice seeing a bunch of people out here, again, might not have been for the reason we wanted sometimes, but I appreciate it. Do I have a motion?
Set.
Set. Adhere.[1767.03]